Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Noah Tremboli. I am the Director of the Accessibility Committee of the Athens City Commission on Disabilities. Today is April 8, 2021. Today would normally be our regular committee meeting, but today we have something a little different for you. We're having an event today with some very special guests with us from the city. Jessica Adini, Director of Engineering, and Andrew Chike, the City Safety Director. Today, we are going to talk about three things the work this committee has been doing with the city, what the city has been doing itself to improve on accessibility and will be showing you how you can report an issue yourself that you see to the city. This committee works with the city on current issues as well as being a part of the planning stage of future projects. We look at a variety of different elements of infrastructure. This includes sidewalks, crosswalks, parking spaces, among other stuff. We also look at the ADA and city code as well. Everyone from the city has been very nice and easy to work with, although we are going to mostly focus on our city today. I know that the city is looking at other areas as well. Last summer, I did an accessibility audit of the community center and the city pool with Mr. Chike and the city planner, Paul Logue. Anyway, without further ado, I am going to turn things over to Jessica Adini.
Thank you, Noah. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Jessica, and I'm the interim city engineer for the city of Athens in our department, among other responsibilities, oversees and maintains streets for the city of Athens. Over the past two years, we've had a representative meet regularly with the Accessibility Committee to review accessibility concerns and review planned transportation projects. The regular meetings are tremendously beneficial. Last year, we were able to review specific components of the Stimson Avenue project and took a detailed look at sidewalks, crosswalks, signals, and parking. The committee also sent the city officials a report of general accessibility recommendations for the Uptown area, and these will be used to plan improvements for another city project. And now Andrew Chike will provide additional information about efforts from the city.
Thank you, Jessica. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm so pleased to be here. I am Andrew Chike, the Deputy Service Safety Director for the city of Athens. Despite our best efforts to be proactive, city staff and administrators are not always aware of problems or issues until they're reported by citizens. The work of this committee to identify and report concerns is vitally important for the city to be able to address issues. In the last year, we were able to permanently install a ramp to access the stage of Arts West. We repaired the automatic opener button at City Hall and added an automatic door open to the Athens Community Center's multipurpose room entrance. And we replaced the signage in the parking garage at the accessible spaces so that they meet ADA standards. Nearly all of these projects were done because of citizens recognizing and reporting them. And now let me turn it over to Davey McNelly and Rob Delak, who are uptown.
It's very nice to have you here with us today. And what we're going to do is show some accessibility issues within the city of Athens. And Rob and I are doing this live, so we're pretty excited. So the first thing we're going to show is this crosswalk on Union and Court Street. So Rob, if you want to just kind of show the crosswalk right here, you can see right here, it doesn't need ADA requirements because there's a lip on the crosswalk right here. So as I try and get up it, especially if it was someone who uses a manual wheelchair, it would be very difficult to be able to get up. And sometimes I get stuck on this particular crosswalk. So one thing we're asking the city to do is to make these crosswalks more standardized and accessible. Another issue, if you zoom in on these truncated domes right here, for people who have low vision or who are blind, they use these to orient themselves in order to know which way across the street. Often, especially in an uptown, they point you diagonally across the street, but they do not point you directly across the crosswalk. So at this particular intersection, there should be three sets of truncated domes. So that's something that we're going to ask the city to be more standardized about. Additionally, let's go up and cross the street here, Rob. You can... Oh, here we go. Sorry. Let me... Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great. So because of the brick nature of the street, for people who are using canes, the canes can get caught in the bricks. I think we heard Lisa Eliasen, the city law director, talking about how people who wear heels actually get their heels caught in the bricks as well. I have big tires, so I don't have as big of a problem with that. So as we focus across this crosswalk, again, you can see that the bricks, some of the bricks are placed really well, and it's easy to get it across, but other bricks are placed less well. And so we're going to have some suggestions about that further along. At this point, we're going to turn it back over to Tiffany to talk a little bit about the CitySource app to report issues in the city of Athens. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. While Rob and Davey are heading to their next destination, we're going to go over how... We wanted to give everyone a chance how to find the app and to download it.
I think it looked good on the video, too. I was able to show you a lot of shots.
Hold on one second. So that you guys can go on ahead and download that app so that you can find the app and download how you might report some of these issues that you find in the city as well. So I'm going to go ahead here and put in a link so that I'm going to put this here in our Facebook link here and add that on our live feed on our Facebook and also in our app here. Okay, so just wanting to put a link here to both the City Getting Started page and also to both the Apple and Google Play Store so that you can download on your smartphone the resources for those apps. Going through the Getting Started app, I just want to share my screen with you. Let me try to... Not as... Sorry. Need to... My apologies. I'm having a little technical difficulty. We're trying to open the source guide. I'm going to share my screen here. So the source guide here just basically shows us how we can go through going to the Apple Store. You'll really just go through and either with the Apple link or the Google link, go directly to that Play Store and download that particular source. You'll install that onto your smartphone and run the app. It'll look similar to this, this app here, this source. And basically, what you'll do is you'll create your own account on this app, and it allows you to do so either... You can go through and submit up the process at the beginning of creating your account, or you can do so while submitting a request. One thing that I do like about this app is that it is quite easy to use. The number of categories that are accessible on here in the sense of what can you report that you see within the city, there's quite a number of categories. Some of the ones that you might easily see throughout town, parking issues that you may see, you might find potholes in the city that you might want to report, issues that you might find, like vandalism or other sorts of issues. ADA accessibility, of course, are issues that we are, of course, very interested in having reported as well, but they're very easily accessible in a drop-down list. And then reporting them is as simple as going through and creating either an address or reporting it within a GPS sort of category. And then also including a picture. I'd like to kind of go through what that might look like. So let's go on ahead and do that while we are waiting on Rob and Davey to get back to their next spot. So let's go ahead and share different screen here. Now, this is looking at the same service, but on our Athens website. So you can also do this on our Athens City website rather than doing it on your mobile device. So here, again, you'll submit your requests by going through the categories. So here, we might say we want to report a pothole or ADA accessibility issue or a garbage or trash issue. So again, it's just going through that drop-down category list. So say we want to do a pothole here. We might want to report that at a certain address. So we start typing in an address that we know. So we might say that that's at 191 Union Street. I don't know. I'm just going to put in an address here. I'll confirm that location. And say I have an image that I want to put on as well. So I happen to have one here. I'm just going to add an image there. So here's my pothole image. I'll say that this is a description of a pothole right at a crosswalk at the entrance to the drive. Okay. I need to know how to spell that word. All right. So then I'll go ahead and hit submit here. I can do this anonymously, but I also do really like to submit as myself so that way I can, you know, be able to be contacted again if they have additional questions. So I can go on ahead and submit next. I can register or sign in and go on ahead through the process and submit this so that way the city would be able to know exactly what that concern is that I have and be able to contact me with more information. The other good thing about both the app and the online service that we have is that you would be able to go back and see, is this issue being addressed? And so you can check on it. You can also check and see what other issues are being reported in the city and are those being addressed. So it is really quite a nice feature. And again, being able to see what all is being reported within your city and what the city is being doing about it is really quite wonderful, I think, as well. We would like to also let you know that, again, both the Android and the iPhone versions are a little bit different, but they do have the same features. Rob's going to demonstrate the app of Android once they get back ready to continue, which I think they're just about ready now. I do want to just let you know that if you have any problems using the app, feel free to chat with us here on Facebook if you have any questions. We're happy to help you with it as we continue on today. Again, you can contact us or anyone at the city, and we're happy to help you as well. All right, Rob, we're ready to go back with you and Davey. Thanks.
We are ready to go. Thank you very much, Tiffany. That was a great overview. So Rob and I are now over on the corner of Washington and Court Street, and Rob and I are both double vaccinated. So we are, you know, we feel... That's why we're not wearing masks right now. We're definitely a mask proponent otherwise. So we're going to show you really quickly something that's really great that the Chase Athens Foundation has done to make things more accessible, but a way that they could do this better. So I'm going to go ahead and go up here, and you can see there is a push-button accessible door opener right here to get into the building. Unfortunately, I'm not able to reach it. There's a cross slope right here, so if I start to turn sideways, I would just tip over in the wheelchair. Whenever you place these buttons, they should be placed on a level surface so that you're able to push it, the door opens, and then you can go up so that you're not tilted sideways. So that's a great example. Go ahead. There we go. That's a great example of something that was done that's a good feature, and some people can really use that push-button door, but it's not accessible to some of the target demographics. Now, we're going to go ahead and walk around onto Washington Street here. And, oh, wow. Look at this. One of these e-scooters was left out in the street. I wonder how that got there, Rob. So often, when students and other people ride the scooters, they may leave them out in the pathways of people. So oftentimes, whenever I park at one of these accessible spots over here that were put into the city through Noah and other people's work, I get out and I come up the street and I can't get through because there'll be three or four e-scooters just parked in the middle of the sidewalk. What we ask is that the e-scooters are parked next to these planners so they're out of the pathway. So here would be much better than where this is. And we didn't, I guess, we didn't put that too much in the way whenever we planted it. So thanks for doing that, Rob. Anything to add on to that, Rob?
No, I don't think specifically, but yeah, I did ride this over here. I tried not to put it too much in the way for this demonstration, but it's still in a position where it should be parked out of the way completely from the travel area of the sidewalk.
Absolutely.
Keep in mind is you can report issues like this to the city through the CitySource app, as was just demonstrated, or on phones, and I'll show you how to do that in a little bit from my phone. But you can also report directly through the Spin app. If you have the Spin app and are riding scooters, you can actually report a problem directly to Spin for bad parking as well as...
And what we always advocate as well in terms of city, in terms of e-scooters and bikes, is for there to be specific places that the city installs for people to park their bikes that are covered and for people to park the scooters as well so they're out of the way. We're going to go ahead and continue down the street here. You know what I can do, Rob? I can do this like an OU tour guide. I can go backwards. So this right here is actually an option. So the city, on our recommendation, used concrete kind of standard so they were able to kind of make this more even, but you can see that there's still definitely some issues right here. If you're especially using a manual wheelchair, you could get caught in these cracks. People who are walking can easily trip over these if you're using a cane. Again, it's just very easy to get caught in these situations. Is this where we wanted to do the report here, Rob? Or no, further along?
We could move a little along further, but just let me comment, I guess, that the city had a lot of work done grinding this down. You can see the lighter colored concrete here is where the contractor ground down the sidewalk last year at the city's request, and that was fantastic work. It really has improved the smoothness and accessibility of the sidewalks here in Uptown.
Absolutely.
But there's still things that can be done, right?
Absolutely. So now I can go over that, but it's still, you know, it's still uneven. Here's another case of a truncated dome that would point someone out to the middle of the street instead of to the crosswalk across these alleys right here. So I think our... The next thing that we wanted to point out, everyone, is this crosswalk is something that we're recommending to keep with, like, you know, the general feature of Athens. If the city of Athens wants to keep everything looking like bricks, this is actually not brick. This is stamped concrete that's made to look like bricks. And again, we were told yesterday when we came out to do a trial run of this that the reason this was done is one of the past mayors in the city of Athens got her heels stuck in the bricks in this crosswalk. So they had stamped concrete put down because, you know, there's not actually that big of cracks right here, and it's much, much more accessible to get across. So again, this is a great feature, a great thing that the city of Athens is doing on future projects. So I'm going to go ahead and cross right here. You can see it's much easier to cross here than it is where maybe a brick is missing, but then once you get here, the slope to get up here does not need ADA requirement. So to actually get up here, I can do it because I use a pretty powerful electric wheelchair, but for other people who have trouble coming up this, or let's say that you're coming down, you know, it's very possible that you would just, you know, tip forward right out of your wheelchair. I wouldn't go down forward on this. I would have to go down backwards, so that does not meet ADA requirement. So that's another thing that we wanted to point out. The next thing that we wanted to point out is right over here. And again, this is a street that's going to be drastically redone with the upcoming streetscaping project. So this is in the plans to happen in the next year or two for this to be completely redone. But as you can see right here, we have some major, major drop-offs right here, here, and it's really, you know, pretty dangerous. I could easily get stuck on that if I wasn't paying a ton of attention. Is this where we want to show how to do the CitySource app? So now I'm going to mute myself while Rob gives the demonstration on how to do a live CitySource.
Okay, so I am going to switch to share mode here to share my screen and to show you what the app looks like and how it works. It's really pretty easy to use. And show you how it works. This is an Android phone I'm on, so it would look a little different if you're on an iPhone, but let me share my screen here. Screen. And I'm going to open the app. So I've downloaded and installed the app. So can somebody confirm that you can see this all right, just to make sure?
Yes, we can see it.
Okay, sounds good. So this is what the app looks like when you first install it. I'm not even logged in at this point, so this is with no account. Just install the app and turn it on, and this is what the app looks like. It gives you a quick update there of how many issues have been reported and fixed all time, and this, by the way, the app has only been recently adopted, this version of it, by the city. It was running in beta, I think, last fall, and then officially started being used, I think, this year. But there were issues that have been reported sort of through beta as well, but it's getting more and more use. I generally pay attention to the new items that are being posted, and you can actually subscribe to notifications if you want to see any time there's an email, any time there's a new issue that's being reported. So there's nice features like that as well. So from here, what I want to show you is just this menu in the upper right is where you can sign in, and I'm not going to do that yet because I want to demonstrate that you don't actually have to have an account to use this app. So if you don't really want to create an account and you just want to report something quick, you can do that. So I'm going to click the button, the middle button, the orange with the plus sign in it, the lower bottom, to report an issue. In this case, I had already done something, so I'm going to click a new report, and it brings up a map that you can then, it shows your location. It's not zoomed in very close. There's a couple of things you can do. You can type an address if you want to type an address in, and it'll zoom you to that address. You can verify that that's the location you're interested in, or you can also, from the other screen we're just on, click the button to show your location, and it will zoom in to your location closer now. And then you can position the map by scrolling around to put the cursor exactly where the issue is, so you don't actually have to be anywhere near where you're reporting. If you took a picture, you could even do that and then report it when you get home if you wanted to, as long as you remember where the location is. So I'm here in front of the, or right next door, actually, right now, to the city building. And so there's the Athens City Building, and I'm going to position it sort of manually where that issue is we're just looking at, and then I'm going to click Confirm Location. So the next screen, it lets you pick from a number of categories that help the city respond to these requests. So by picking certain categories, you get to different city staff members, and I don't know exactly who's seeing which categories of information, but Andrew Chike, who's on the call, is one of those people that gets some of these reports, depending on what type they are. If it's something about the parks and recreation facilities, that would go to a different person. General code violations and other types of violations like that, housing complaints, we'd go to the code office, for example. So the city has done a great job of getting, essentially, this is the way you can get information right to the people that need to hear about a problem without having to pick up the phone and figure out who to call. So I'm going to click on ADA accessibility as the category for this event right here, which is this sidewalk problem. It's technically in the driveway, but it is part of the travel for the sidewalk. And I'm going to click to add a photo, take a photo. So, you know, I can take this to give perspective if I wanted to. That might be a good idea here so that it's clear, the context of the picture, and I'm going to take that photo and then click the blue check mark is to confirm that that photo was a good photo to add. So one thing to note is the application is smart enough to look at the photo location and determine that that was different than the point you put on the map. And in this case, they're really close. It's 16 or 15 East Washington Street, and I'm going to keep with what I entered, the first one. Click Select That. Now, you can add multiple photos as well, so there's another button below again to add another photo. So why don't I just quickly do that? I'm going to add another photo that's close-up just to make it clear that, yeah, there's a problem here. a problem here. And accept that as well. Okay. Then I'm going to click continue with two photos, the button at the bottom. And then I can put a description in here. So, uh, it might take me a minute to type this, so I'll just put in, um, Okay, that's probably good enough just for what I'm trying to do here now, but you can put a more elaborate description if that is helpful. More information is probably better in general for the city to respond. Uh, and then notice I get to the screen now and it asks me to either register, sign in or submit the request as a guest. So like Tiffany mentioned earlier, she likes to submit as herself so that it's known she's, she's engaging and knows, people know that she's the one submitted this request. And I do the same thing. Uh, but in this case, just to demonstrate this, I'm going to submit as a guest. And oh, it doesn't capture. I forgot about that. Let's, uh, see how well that works here. Let's take a moment. When I did this last night, the capture was quick. Okay. It didn't require the capture and it submitted it. Okay. So I'm going to go back to the beginning here and I'm going to click the request button now. So you can also, without, again, having an account, you can, uh, you can see requests. Now I'm going to zoom into Athens and you can see that this refreshes that there's been quite a few requests in the area. And let's see if I click this one here. There's an ADA, ADA, ADA accessibility request. That's probably the one I just submitted and sure enough it is. So it's already in the system and if there's probably already an email in somebody's inbox in the city staff, that this is an issue that they, they, they need to pay attention to. So that's, I think, the quick overview of how you can do this. You can also, again, you can, uh, sign in, register and create an account. And all you need to do that is your email and create a password. Uh, I think that's all the only information you can provide, or maybe, I think it asks you for a location and you can just put city of Athens if you wanted to for your location. You don't have to put your home address or anything. Uh, so that's the, the basic in and out of submitting a request. I think we're ready to move on up the street here.
That sounds great, Rob. Thank you very much.
While we're, uh, walking along here for a moment, is there any questions that, uh, we might be able to address at this point that have come up in chat or anything?
We're still sharing your screen, Rob.
Uh, Rob, we haven't had any questions come up yet, but thanks for asking. Um, do any of our guests, um, in attendance have any questions? Feel free to, um, type or, or speak up if you do have anything.
Um, I have a question. My name's Anna. I'm, I, my son is a wheelchair user. Um, if, if you look and we see that someone's already reported that spot, is redundancy better? So I should re-report it or is it better to say, okay, it's already been done? I don't need to report it on the app.
I, I really found that redundancy is good. I mean, I don't know that you should report the same issue 10 times yourself, but, um, reporting it again definitely shows that there is the need and that multiple people are seeing it as an issue.
Thanks.
And I think it, it really helped to bring to the city's attention, the sidewalk. I don't know if you can show it over across the street, kind of catty corner to us in front of the sheriff's office over there. That sidewalk was completely redone and I think partly it was because a lot of people had reported that as an issue. Uh, before it was completely impossible to get through and you had to actually, I had to go out into the street to be able to get to like Donkey Coffee, um, from where I parked my gray van right there. All right, well, let's keep, keep moving down the street here. I'm going to keep being an Athens tour guide here. But let me know if I'm going to add anything, okay, Rob? Uh, and what we're going to do is talk about some, some private businesses now. So you can use the CitySource app to report, uh, major issues or issues within the city of Athens, including sidewalks. But for, for businesses, the CitySource app isn't the way to do that, but we're going to talk about some of these anyways. So right now we're in front of the original Pita Pit and the Fluff Bakery right here. As you can see, there's, uh, two or three steps, depending on how far down the street you are to get into Fluff or to get into the Pita Pit. Um, so a lot of people may, may see this and just think, oh, this isn't accessible. This isn't a place for me to be able to get into. So the first thing that we really recommend that businesses do is that they put some signage in the window that's visible. Um, and we're going to work as the accessibility committee to provide, uh, some information about how to put these signs together. So for instance, right down here, if there is a way to add on, you know, if you have accessibility needs, call this number, push this doorbell, whatever it is to be able to get someone's attention. It may, it might be up in the window next to the menu. Um, so that's, that's one thing. Another thing secondarily, you have someone behind you there, Rob. Uh, another, uh, secondary thing that we recommend is the Pita Pit and Fluff and this building in general has a secret entrance that you do not know about unless you happen to stumble across it, which happened to me about five years ago. And I've been trying to spread the word. So there's actually a side entrance over here. I, so, so there could be a sign that says, hey, if you'd like to enter the building, here's a sign that says, come over this way and then someone will open the door for you. Perfect. We're, we're just doing a video about how to get through around Athens. So I don't actually need to come in right now. Thank you though. Uh, so, so you can see that people are, you know, trained to, to look and to open the door. You can get into, uh, Fluff by going through Pita Pit or going to Pita Pit by just going to this door. Again, there's a lift right here on this door. So that's something that we would recommend, uh, this business take a look into this building to get a small threshold ramp to be able to get up into the building. Uh, so these are, these are simple and cost-effective ways to make Athens more accessible. We're going to walk down, uh, the street here really quick and point out one more secret entrance.
And I just want to make a point that this door doesn't have a sign that says you can get in here if, if you need access or anything like that, just says exit only. So it might, that might discourage folks from trying this as a secret entrance to get in or getting to Fluff. Um, so I, I'd recommend they update that sign in here.
So I am now down here at the Hangover EZ. Um, and as you can see over here, there are steps to get into the main entrance, but through this secret entrance over here, you can get in and there's a side door that works. Uh, but again, it's, it's not marked very well. There's no way that someone who uses the wheelchair would know that. So as, and Rob's going to do a little bit of a close up on that there. As, as businesses, as Athens becomes more accessible, what we're going to ask for is that, um, businesses address this through, through signage, through clear and consistent signage so people know what they're looking for, including to have on their website. Uh, because someone who, someone who uses a wheelchair has a mobility issue may pass right by here without, without considering this as an option. So I'm going to be the tour guide again. So we're going to show a couple more issues that are pretty consistent throughout the city of Athens, especially Uptown, uh, because of the age of the buildings, uh, and how long ago the sidewalks are redesigned. So this is what I call the one step issue. Uh, this is one of the, uh, this is university, uh, business. As you can see, there's one step to get into the entrance. There's some multiple ways of dealing with this. One is to grind down the concrete and then relay the tile so that this is just a ramp. Another option is, you know, to put up signage that says how, how to get the assistance that you need. The third option is to have a removable ramp, a threshold ramp that just goes out to here that they bring out when someone wants to get inside. Uh, and that's not always clear whether businesses and buildings have those options. And, uh, as we, as we go down the street here, Rob can probably point out, a lot, a lot of these, uh, buildings and businesses are going to have this one step issue. So you have the same thing at the TI right here where there's one step. Again, there's no clear, uh, information about how to get in. And then you have the crystal here, which actually is recessed. So this is how you could make some of these buildings accessible is you recessing the doors and then putting in a ramp, a concrete ramp that goes up. So that's an example of something that's been done well and we'll see that a couple more times. Including right here at the pig stud. So you can see the doorways are wide enough. This is the 40 inch door. And then there's a ramp that goes up as you enter. So again, that's a, that's a great example of how to make an otherwise inaccessible building accessible and something that we're a strong advocate for on the disability commission and the accessibility committee. Uh, maybe legal is another, yeah, sure, we have a question.
Yeah, we have a question. Um, is the one step issue the city's responsibility or the businesses to solve?
That is the businesses' responsibility or the building's responsibility, depending on how the lease is written up. So often accessibility may fall in the lease to the business, uh, to provide those. Sometimes it's the business's responsibility and the lease to provide that. So, uh, as, you know, people who own businesses are watching this and wondering how to make their business more accessible, it's something to have a conversation about with the landlord or with, with the building owner. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, we're now down at the, this is one, one more quick thing to point out. So this is something that could be very easily made accessible, but as you can see, there's actually caution tape right here because there's an inaccessible curb to get into the building. Um, and a- as you see this as a, as a wheelchair user, it's certainly a little bit frustrating, but also if you're using, uh, you know, a cart or a cane, or if you're, if you're using a, uh, you know, stroller to push kids around, that kind of thing is, is very difficult and unnecessary. Uh, so this is a recessed doorway that could be very easily made accessible. And we are-
Further comment about that is that this is a trip hazard for anyone and it's why there's caution tape on it because it's a trip hazard period, not just for those wheelchairs or canes.
Yeah, actually, we think you pointed that out, Rob. So we're going to point out one more issue before we kick it back to Noah. Um, so one thing that we've been doing as we provide accessibility, uh, feedback to the city is also for, for objects, and I'm blanking on the name right now, uh, protruding objects. So as you're using a cane, if you're, if you have a vision disability or if you're blind, if you're using your cane and walking along here, your cane goes underneath this and you can easily like bump your hip or, um, or a knee into these protruding objects. So what we're really recommending is that there's something here on the ground that directs you around these protruding objects or to, whenever possible, to not have protruding objects. And if there, if there are going to be objects such as, um, you know, parking meters, trees, to have those all along the roadway, uh, to have the benches along the roadway in one kind of general area so that people who, who have low vision, who have a vision disability or who are blind know where they're walking, where it's safe to walk. Um, and I think that's where we're going to end this. I guess, can we point out really quickly, two of the, two of the worst curb cuts in town are just cat, are, uh, just catty corner to us over here. And again, these are things that we're hoping and we believe based on our conversations with the city are going to be addressed. Uh, but the curb cuts to get over into artifacts gallery and Casa Nueva over there, crossing the street over to the Valero, uh, both of these curb cuts are just completely inaccessible. Uh, I think in the meantime, we could grind down the concrete some so that it's even with the bricks, but the bricks are very sporadic. Some of the bricks are missing at various points. Um, and the slope and crosswalks on, on all these are, are not accessible and, uh, create a lot of issues for people with mobility issues. Now, before we take it back to Noah, uh, do we have, Iraq, do we have any, uh, a question from people about things that we talked about so far?
I'm not seeing any questions in the chat currently.
Okay, great. And again, if you have any questions and you're watching this on the Facebook live stream to the city of Athens, you feel free to put those questions into the chat there and they will be addressed, um, maybe not, not right now while we're doing this live, but at a later time, we'll, we'll be able to jump back on there and do that. So thank, thank you everyone for watching. We have one, uh, some other, uh, talk happening right after this, so stay, stay tuned in. And Noah, we're going to kick it back to you. Thank you.
Actually, dynam is twelve minutes.
Great, thank you, Noah. Um, I'm, thanks Rob and Davy. That was actually magnificent, the two of you demonstrating the CitySat, CitySource app and showing us examples of issues that cause, um, our city to be less accessible. Um, I'm Diane Bouvier and I retired from Ohio University where I mostly, um, worked on issues related to infrastructure for the university. And now I've been on the accessibility committee and for the past year, I've been the city, the secretary and the mayor's designate on the city commission. So as Rob and Davy pointed out, there still are places that are difficult to navigate while getting around our city, partly because Athens has hills and there are lots of older buildings that have one or two steps. Most of what they talked about would follow regulations under the Americans with Disabilities Act for both public entities under title two and private entities under title three. Another regulation, section 504 of the 1973 Rehabilitation Act requires any entity receiving federal funds to offer programs and services that are accessible to people with and without disabilities. And it gives a framework for thinking about the importance of creating access to programs and services, even if a structure isn't entirely accessible. I have seven things that, um, businesses or programs can do that aren't centered on the physical facility and some of them Dev, um, Davy demonstrated, so that's great. This will reinforce them. The first one is when the main entrance isn't accessible, to post a sign in your window that says, if you need help to enter, ring here or put a bell there or call or text. And another that indicates where the accessible entrance is. So it can be something as simple as this until you get your regular sign made. For some places like Davy demonstrated at Fluff's, there may be a secret entrance, but it is, isn't always visible from the front. The second one, if a door has one or two steps or a building has one or two steps, it might be worth investing in a temporary ramp that can be placed at the entrance to allow someone to come in. So just Google portable ramp or movable ramp or temporary ramp. And this- And this might be something that a few businesses talk together and get something they can share. They're not very expensive. So go online and take a look.
Diane, you want to hold your signs up a little higher? We can't see them.
Oh, sorry. Can you see that one? Okay, thanks. The third, assess your store or space to see whether there is at least a 36-inch clearance. So those using wheelchairs or walkers or other mobility devices can safely navigate your store. And check that there are no display signs or boxes or trash receptacles or anything that might be in the way, in the pathway. And if you're a patron in that facility, you might want to ask the owner or just let the owner know this is something that you noticed and maybe it's something that they could just be mindful of because they might not think about it either. Number three, oh wait, that's number three. Number four, put a sign up at the cash register or program entrance saying, if you need assistance or accommodation to access our program or service, please let us know. If you notice that the person is deaf or hard of hearing, you may need to have a pen and paper handy. If the person has difficulty reading a document or a menu, you might want to ask them if it would be helpful to have the contents read aloud or ask if a large font document would be available. So when you're uptown and you see signs that say, like, all the different coffees you can get, you might, some people might not be able to read that so easily. So have paper menus ready that might be larger and just easier to read. Just pay attention to what kind of information it is that you're offering and whether or not it needs a private setting to discuss that. Number five, train employees to be able to answer the question, where is the nearest accessible restroom? And you might not have one in your facility, but you should know and your employees should know how to answer that question. So figure out where the nearest accessible restroom is so you can help guide people. Number six, Davy mentioned this as well, things that you can put on your website. So it's really important when customers or patrons or people looking at services are going to your website, if you added content that would talk about your facility and what is and isn't accessible, that would be really helpful. So include information about the closest accessible parking, whether there are any steps to get into or around the building, whether or not you have a temporary ramp that's available to people, whether or not there is an accessible restroom, where the accessible entrance is, and whether or not you have Braille or large format menus or brochures available. And who to contact if you have questions about accessibility. It's so much better for a customer to know in advance what to expect so they can plan accordingly and to be able to talk to somebody to make sure that they understand what they're going to be, what your facility can offer. Number seven is work as a team. If a person looks like they might need assistance, then ask. And if you're not sure what to do, then ask the person what they might suggest as a solution for them and what's worked for them in the past. So we're coming to the end of our program and we really want to emphasize that we need your help. Andrew Chiki talked about this in the beginning that, and all of our presenters have been talking about this, that we really depend on you to help us make our city more accessible. So now we're hoping that you've downloaded the CitySource app and that you can inform the city when you find issues. Please know that the city commission, the accessibility committee is available to consult with you to review a facility's accessibility and to make recommendations. It's really better business for everyone when all people have access. So please contact us through the email on the Athens City Commission on Disabilities website if you'd like us to work with you. And the address is in the chat. I just added it in. I think that Tiffany's going to add it to Facebook and other formats. So on behalf of the City Commission on Disabilities and the city of Athens, we appreciate your joining us for our Spring Walk and Roll event. Thank you to all of our presenters, Noah Trembley, Jessica Adean, Andrew Chiki, Tiffany Beals, Rob Delock and Davy McNally. And thank you also to our tech support from the city of Athens, Scott Thompson and Ryan Schwartzoff. We're so grateful that you've joined us today and that you're interested in helping to make Athens more accessible. Thank you for coming. And as Davy mentioned, if you have any questions you'd like for us to address later, please just add that to the chat and we can contact you later. Thank you.